I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is a beautiful, beautiful prayer. Minutes, the March 24th, 2015 work session minutes and the March 24th, 2015 board meeting minutes are available for your review. The sheriff's office has prepared information on lightning, safety, awareness. Sheriff Kelly Junior, add what you had to say about all the flyers.
Say, say what?
He's a genius.
It worked.
Thank you so much for that information and please pay attention. We'll put it on our web.
We have flyers in the back.
We have flyers in the back and we'll get it on, out on Channel 24. The Board of Commissioners would like to present Jennifer Swapper, 2015 World Autism Awareness Day and Month Proclamation. If you'll come forward and do you have some of your family you'd like to stand with you? Thank you very much. I'll read this and then I'll make you this presentation. Who's our little buddy here? Alan McClure. 2015 World Autism Awareness Day and Month Proclamation. Whereas autism, the fastest growing development disability in the United States affecting more than three million people, is an urgent public health crisis that demands national response. And whereas autism is the result of a neurological disorder that affects the normal functioning of the human brain and can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background. And whereas symptoms and characteristics of autism may present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in significant lifelong impairment of an individual's ability to learn, develop help, interactive behaviors, and understand verbal as well as nonverbal communication. And whereas the efforts to address autism continues, doctors, therapists, educators can help persons with autism overcome or adjust to its challenges and provide early accurate diagnosis, resulting appropriate education intervention, and therapy that are vital to future growth and development. And whereas ensuring that persons living with autism have access to lifelong care and services needed to pursue the full measure of personal happiness and achieve their greatness and potential. And whereas the Pauling County is honored to take part in the annual Observation of Autism Awareness Month and the World Autism Awareness Day in the hope that it will lead to better understanding of the disorder. Now therefore it be resolved that I, David A. Austin, Chairman of the Pauling County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Autism Awareness Month, April 2nd, 2015 as World Autism Awareness Day, and Pauling County to raise awareness of autism and the myriad of issues surrounding autism as well as the increased knowledge of the programs that have been and are being developed to support individuals with autism and their families. Thank you all and we're going to have you stand there and come in and get back. I guess you have to be related to the flag.
I am. Don't tell anybody in here that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The Board of Commissioners would like to present Sue Cleary with National Donate Life Month Proclamation. Sue, if you'll come forward. I'll read this and I know you've got a couple of words to share with us.
National Donate Life Month, whereas one of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life. And whereas more than 123,000 men, women, and children await life-saving or life-enhancing organ transplants of which 5,000 people reside in Georgia. And whereas the need for organ, eye, tissue donation grows daily as a new patient is added to the national waiting list for an organ transplant every 11 minutes. And whereas the critical donor shortage remains a public health crisis as an average of 18 people die daily due to the lack of available organs. And whereas organ, eye, tissue donation can provide families the comfort of knowing the gift of donated organs and tissue endows another person with renewed hope for a healthy life. And whereas donating life through organ, eye, tissue donation is the ultimate act of generosity and kindness, we Pauling County, Georgia citizens can perform. And whereas Lifelink of Georgia is a nonprofit community service organization dedicated to recovery of high-quality organs and tissues for transportation, transplantation, therapy. And whereas Pauling County, Georgia supports Lifelink of Georgia's life-saving mission. And therefore be it resolved that I, David A. Austin, Chairman of the Pauling County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Donate Life Month in Pauling County to honor all those who made the decision to give the gift of life and focus attention on the extreme need for an organ, eye, and tissue donation to encourage all residents to take action and sign up to Georgia's donor registry at www.donatelifegorgia.org to discuss the miracle of transplantation as a family and to make a family commitment to organ, eye, and tissue donations. Sue, thank you and we're going to have a picture.
Wait, say that again? You don't get too much, did you?
Sue, I think you have a few words left.
I appreciate the chance to speak today. This is something that is very dear to my heart and is definitely needed in today. Lifelink of Georgia is an independent nonprofit organization and tissue recovery organization and we're one of 58 federally designated tissue and organ recovery organizations. We collaborate with hospitals, medical professionals, other agencies such as law enforcement, medical examiners, coroners, and as well as the public and we try to increase the awareness of the need and the growing need for organ and tissue donations. For me, I was exposed to this when I was a deputy coroner. I served Pauling County for nine years as a deputy coroner, working with Lifelink very closely and with families. And much to my disappointment, the families were not aware, they didn't understand, there was a lot of misconceptions about organ and tissue donation. And so I'd like to share some facts with you. David went over some of them. We work with more than 250 hospitals and we work with 10 transplant centers. Right now there's approximately 123,289 people waiting for organ donations. Now we have those numbers of those people waiting, but we have no national registry of organs that are ready and that can be used. We have banks for everything from our money to blood banks to sperm banks, but we have no organ and tissue banks and I find that to be sad in the least. So he mentioned 18 people die every day because they are in need of an organ donation and can't get it. Same thing, a lot of new people come on that list every day. One organ donor saves eight people and the tissue donation saves and helps restore health for over 50 people. And I think that's huge, just how much can be used and people aren't aware of that. There's no cost to be a donor family and a lot of people are a little confused about tissue donation and what that really means. On my drive in today, I heard on the radio that Tori Spelling, who is an actress, fell at Benihana's backwards and fell onto the hot grill and burned her arms and she's undergoing skin grafts right now. And skin grafts is one of the largest tissues that we do use. We have to have our skin, it is a two-way membrane, very needed for protection. But we also use bone to restore mobility and assist limb construction, corneas restore sight to people who have been injured by disease or trauma. I spoke with someone today and she mentioned that she had an aunt that received cornea transplants. Heart valves can be life-saving to children or adults with absent or damaged valves. Ligaments and tendons can be used to rebuild joints after trauma, arthritis, or other diseases. Skin grafts can help burn patients heal and help and make the difference between life and death. Meningitis such as open heart surgery or post mastectomy, patients' breast reconstruction also utilize skin grafts. And veins and arteries are used in heart bypass surgery to reestablish blood circulation. Veins help patients avoid leg amputation after loss of circulation. So today, I'm here not only accepting the proclamation, which thank you very much, I appreciate, but also to encourage everyone to become an organ donor, a tissue donor. You can do that when you register for your state license, but you don't have to wait four years to do that. You can go, we do have a state registry which David mentioned, online, just go to Lifelink. And it's amazing to me, the misconceptions that are out there, we do not mutilate, we don't destroy, there's total respect of your loved one. And no medical emergency personnel from the hospital to the EMTs to anyone in law enforcement, paramedics, they'll lose their license if they don't try to save you. So some people have that misconception. It's the number one thing I hear when I'm out speaking is people like, well, they're not going to save me if I'm an organ donor. And that is not true. They're not going to lose their license over not trying to do all they can to save you. So what could be better than making a gift of life possible and leaving a legacy? A few years back, my son was in a life-threatening situation where we had on life support for five days and we had to make that decision if he would be an organ donor and I made it. Of course, we didn't have to make that decision totally, he lived and so I rejoice that. But I wouldn't hesitate for a second to do that because it helps just so many people and it's amazing. So I have information for everybody today and I'll be handing that out after the meeting. Right now in Georgia, we have 4,891 people waiting on transplants. Last year we performed over 28,000 transplants. So the numbers grown, but only increased like 300 from 2013. So we ask that people become more active and definitely consider that to be an option. So I appreciate your time, thank you very much, and thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you. The Board of Commissioners would like to present Dick Donovan, Pauling County District Attorney with the Victim's Rights Proclamation. Dick, I think you have some folks we did today.
I do.
Y'all come forward. All five. Hopefully get some bigger.
National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 19th through 25th, 2015. Whereas Americans are the victims of more than 26 million crimes each year. And crime can touch the lives of anyone regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status. And whereas many victims face challenges in finding appropriate services, including victims with disabilities, young victims of color, deaf, hard of hearing victims, LGBTQ victims, tribal victims, elder victims, victims of mental illness, immigrant victims, teen victims, victims with limited English proficiency, and others. And whereas incorporating communities, existing experts, and trusted sources of support into efforts to fully serve survivors will develop a criminal justice system response that is truly accessible and appropriate for all victims of crime. And whereas victims know best how to direct and manage their own lives and true recovery for crime will incorporate a victim's cultural, religious, economic, social, and personal interests. Whereas with the full weight of their community and victim service providers behind them, survivors will feel empowered to face the grief, awe, fear, anger, shame without fear of judgment and will feel understood and worthy of support. Whereas the National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 19th through the 25th, 2015, is opportune time to commit to ensuring that all victims of crime, even those challenging to reach or serve, are offered culturally, linguistically accessible, appropriate services in the aftermath of crime. And whereas the Pauling County District Attorney's Office is hereby dedicated to building partnerships with trusted sources to support, including community leaders, religious groups, schools, and other agencies to better reach and serve all victims of crime, no matter their community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, David A. Austin, Chairman of the Pauling County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of April 19th through the 25th, 2015, as National Crime Victims Rights Week and reaffirm Pauling County's commitment to respect and enforce victims' rights and address their needs during National Crime Victim Rights Week and throughout the year. And express our appreciation for those victims and crime survivors who have turned personal tragedy into a motivating force to improve our response to victims of crime and build a more just community.
If y'all stand there, we're going to have a picture. I'd like you to get behind Dick, you don't want to be totally gone. Thank you all. Dick, you want to say a few words?
I'm sorry. You want to say a few words?
I do. God asked me, didn't I have to ask?
I'm not saying anything. You know, this was new to me four years ago, but it is one of the things I do with a great deal of pleasure, to come over here every year when you do this for us and recognize crime victims' rights. First, once again, let me thank the Pauling County Board of Commissioners for this annual recognition of Crime Victims Rights Week. As you know, crime victims' rights services are an important function of our office. We in the DA's office and Pauling Circuit are dedicated to the rights and interests that are protected by the crime victims' built rights. As I told you last year at this time, in the third quarter of the 20th century, that ends in 1950, 1975, there was a great deal of emphasis put on the rights of defendants. Miranda and the progeny had a lot to do with the way defendants were treated and a lot of emphasis was put on being sure that defendants were treated fairly. And that's not a bad thing and I don't object to that. But in the last quarter of the 20th century, from 1975 to 2000, there was a different emphasis and that was put on crime victims' rights. To the extent that there were in those 25 years and the years since, more than 32 acts passed by the United States Congress addressing crime victims' rights. Joy Cross, the Director of Justice Programs with the U.S. Department of Justice, recently issued the following statement and I'll read it. "For three decades, National Crime Victims Rights Week has successfully promoted awareness of victims' rights and services and honored countless crime victims and survivors. Although there is much to celebrate within the victims' rights movement, we still face multiple, complex challenges in reaching out to victims. New types of crimes have emerged and proliferated as a result of changes brought about by technology, globalization, and changing demographics in our society. Meanwhile, longstanding types of victimizing endure, demanding a renewed commitment to action. Our District Attorney's Office has item set off, works tirelessly to ensure victims' and families of victims all the rights guaranteed in the Crime Victims' Built Rights. In support of those efforts, we have four full-time investigators that are all post-certified, that is, police officers standing in training council certified, law enforcement officers, who in addition to their investigative duties, assist our victims and witnesses and our victim witness advocates. We have in addition, and I had to count these up last night when I was going over this, in addition to the two volunteers and four interns, that's six people right there, we have the five young women that you saw just a minute ago. Jamie White, who is our victim witness coordinator, who has been in the office as long as I have been and been several years before that. Lexie Markova, Lexie. Jeanette Cox, Megan Needham, and Jessica Brown. They are assigned to the Spirit Court, each of whom, each of these ladies is specially trained and experienced in helping victims make it through the aftermath of often traumatic, cataclysmic, and life-changing crimes of which they have been victims. These professionals also help with assessing appropriate compensation and in some cases, the basic restructuring of a victim's life. These are specially trained advocates and they make certain that our prosecution of the criminal is not the only way we serve the people in Pauling County." Now again, I've introduced Jamie and I've introduced these ladies. They are our victim witness advocates. Let me tell you a little bit, just one small piece of information that you probably don't realize. We opened 2,136 cases in my office last year. That's more than eight every day. A crime does not necessarily have just one victim. There are often multiple victims. If there's homicide, there are family members who are victims. You may be a victim of theft, there may be several people who were the victim of a single perpetrator. So the figure 2,136 open cases doesn't mean that there were 2,136 victims. These five ladies and the six volunteers that I referred to a few minutes ago, deal with every one of those victims and deal with the witnesses that we need in order to prosecute those cases. This is a daunting, and I will tell you sometimes exhausting, a case. It's not just sitting at your desk and making reports or making phone calls, which is a very important part of it, to make contact with the victims and the witnesses. But then these ladies spend hours, we have jury trials going on right now. They're all over here and they're all waiting for me to shut up so they can go back and do what they do. We have victims in the courtroom right now that are waiting for these ladies. They sit in the courtroom with the victims. They sit in our office with the victims. They deal with them and it's really hard to deal with someone who has had a traumatic, life-changing experience without that affecting you. And I've got to say, they do a very good job of leaving it, if they leave here, hoping they all leave it here. But that's the kind of thing to deal with and that's not a job that I personally think I would like to have. It's a very difficult job for me to do. They're very special people to do this job. For me and on behalf of the DA's office, we greatly appreciate the recognition of the Board of Commissioners for Crime Victims Rights Week. It's an important part of our job and we appreciate your recognition of that. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
The Pauling County Board of Commissioners would like to present Dave Wunder, Pauling County E-911 Director, Emily F. Christina, Yawma Confort, Deputy with the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week Proclamation.
This is about them. They're the ones who do the job every day.
I'll read this and Dave, I'll call on you to say a few words for us. National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, whereas when an emergency occurs, which can be any time, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters depends upon the quality, accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Pauling County E-911 Communication Center. And whereas the public safety communications officers are first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services and are the single most vital link for emergency responders by monitoring the activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. Whereas the public safety communications officers of the Pauling County E-911 Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, treatment of patients, processing over 288,000 emergency and non-emergency telephone and dispatch calls in 2014. And whereas each telecommunication officer has exhibited compassion, understanding, professionalism during the performance of their job and in the past year. Now therefore, I, David A. Austin, Chairman of the Pauling County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of April 12th through 19th, 2015, as a National Public Safety Communications Week in Pauling County and honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. We all honor these folks. Let's try to squeeze them together, they love each other. Thank you all. Dave is being honored statewide, he's done a lot of great things, tax to 911 and other accomplishments. He's asked to come and testify before the legislature this year and is seen as one of the best in the 911 industry. In fact, was single-handedly, I think, helpful in saving our 911 fees from going to general fund of the state and keeping it within 911. So thank you for dedication, thank you for a great job, appreciate you. Now it is my honor-
Really, the only thing that I have to add to the proclamation is that this is my thirty-first year in public safety. I've had twenty years or twenty-one years with the other agencies, and the last ten years at Pauling County with the 911. And as you know, I'm the president and one of the state 911 organizations, so I get to travel around, I get to see other 911 centers, I speak to them, work with them at the state and national level. And without a doubt, I'm very confident in saying that the folks that we have working at our 911 center exhibit the utmost of professionalism and dedication above and beyond what I've seen at other 911 centers across the state. And of course, I'd love to honor them all the time, particularly this time of year when they set aside a telecommunication week.
Thank you all. Dave is being honored statewide. He's done a lot of great things, tax to 911 and other accomplishments. He's asked to come and testify before the legislature this year and is seen as one of the best in the 911 industry. In fact, was, single-handedly, I think, helpful in saving our 911 fees from going to general fund of the state and keeping it within 911. So, thank you for dedication, thank you for a great job. Appreciate you. Now, it is my honor to have Chief, feel free to introduce Greg Elsberry as the new Pauling County Deputy Fire Chief. Greg, you come stand up here in front, and do you have any family with you?
Yes, my wife Suzanne and my mom.
If y'all come forward.
That's right.
The sheriff wants to get in on this. Y'all come on up. I've known the Elsberry family for a long time. They've known me since I was a kid, so thank you all for being here. And I believe, Chief, you want to have a few words to say?
Good morning. First of all, I'm glad this process is over. Chairman knows that. Sheriff Gell is wanting my job back in October, and he's called me every day the last six months on the deputy chief job. He's always wanted to be a fireman, so.
He can't make that. You guys are always on calendars. He can't make one of those calendars, so.
Well, thank y'all very much for allowing me to introduce our new deputy chief. I'm very proud to have Greg Elsberry as the new deputy chief. We had eleven applicants, and thank you to Brian Ackerman, Human Resource Director, assisted me with the interview. We have some great applicants, but Greg rose to the top. Glad to have him. I've known Greg for a long time. We grew up together in the fire department. We were both volunteers, so he's been, I believe he started volunteering in 1992, became a paid firefighter in 1996, and he's just escalated from there, done well. He served as a battalion officer and a division chief for the last ten years in operations and was assigned to a whole shift, and he did a lot of extra duties. Some of the qualifications he has, he is a arson investigator with the state. He also has certifications in fire inspections. He's a fire instructor, a certified fire officer. He's a National Registered Paramedic, and he's completing his EMS instructor certification where he can teach EMTs and paramedics. So he brings a lot to the table. He also has a degree in fire science as well, and he's been a member. He had a volunteer in heart. He's a volunteer for many organizations in public safety, and he served on those. He's been the chairman of our local nursing planning committee here in the county, so he's went through a lot. He's served a lot of times. He's been a very dedicated employee. It was a grueling process through the applications, but his name always came up, and I believe he is a perfect fit to assist me. I'm taking a couple of hats off and throwing them on him now, and me and him will be working together. We worked very well together through the years, so I don't think we'll have a problem at all. He's going to be tasked with daily operations in the fire department and overseeing that, making sure that the employees get the resources they need to protect them as well as the citizens of Pauling County, and I couldn't be more happy to have him.
If you'll come forward, let's get this issue. I didn't know you were going to come up.
Sheriff, you want to come on? Come on, dude.
Whatever you can do. Just hold Edma block this issue. Thank you. Greg. We are proud of one of our homegrown guys here, Greg Elsberry. Thank you so much for all your dedication to work you've done. There are no invited guests. Reports from committees and departments. Devin couldn't be here today, so we'll dispense with the EMS report. There is a discussion item about intergovernmental agreement between Pauling County and the Airport Authority. I got this late last night and didn't get to read it until this morning. I don't know if it's really appropriate to have a discussion with this guy about now of year, that's the time on here.
Mr. Chairman, I would, my wife and I got in at nine-thirty. The email came through at eight forty-five P.M., and I had a meeting with a constituent this morning, so I had just skimmed over it. I personally don't feel prepared to discuss it. I'm assuming that Ms. Skipper, Council, only received it at the same time, so as far as clarifying things in the amendment from Council, she may or may not have had time to review it. But I would just like to request, respectfully request, that we postpone the discussion until our next meeting, where I can be more prepared to have a discussion.
It's my understanding, and maybe I'm speaking before you, but we aren't going to vote on it, correct? So the purpose of this is just to introduce the idea? Is that correct?
Right. The purpose of, the purpose of, three weeks ago, we had a meeting, and through several meetings, we've had citizens discuss the intergovernmental agreement. The intergovernmental agreement's been something that, when it was done back in September, I voted against it. I don't agree with the intergovernmental agreement. I don't agree with the way it was done, and I don't agree with what's in the intergovernmental agreement. However, right now, that's what we have. And so, I have listened to the citizens, I've talked to some of the Airport Authority members, I have talked to some of the Board of Commissioners members, I have talked, listened to what the citizens have said, and talked to the citizens, and I made a comment three weeks ago in the meeting, that I would look at, that although I didn't agree with the intergovernmental agreement, didn't think we needed to have it, I didn't agree with us handing over the airport like that, that I wanted to look at seeing what I could do to bring something for discussion, to make what we have better. You know, sometimes I think I'd just like to say, hey, let's get rid of the intergovernmental agreement. But I thought, let's look at this and see what we can do to make things better. One of the things that have, several things have come up, but one of the things that came up was the airshow. We saw some issues with the airshow. And then we also, I've been to the Airport Authority meetings, and they've actually had some things that have come up, and there are IT issues, insurance issues, just different things that have come up, and I thought, well, let's just look at this. So, I realized that I got that to you late last night, and I had told you in an email that I would try to get it to you over the weekend and wasn't able to do it. But I brought this for discussion, not only for us, I brought it to be able to present to y'all, to the Board of Commissioners this morning. And you got it last night, and you got it in hard paper form this morning, and thank you, Pat, for printing that off. Lonnie had also brought it, so we got some extra copies. But I wanted to bring it today for a little bit of discussion, and I know, Dave, you made a comment that you're not prepared to discuss it, and I completely understand. But the reason I wanted to discuss it today was because tomorrow is the Airport Authority meeting, and that would give them an opportunity to discuss things if they wanted to. And then in a couple of weeks from now, if we need to get together, two of us at a time, throughout the next couple of weeks, a couple of weeks from now, maybe we bring this back and we vote on this, and then it gives the Airport Authority another meeting that they would have before I'm asking them to give us some sort of an answer to this proposal by May 21st, by about 5:00 P.M., which is the day after their second meeting. So what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to present it this morning so that we have it, and so that the public can get it, and so that we have the time between now on April 14th, all the way to May 21st, when I'm asking for the Airport Authority to give us a response. It'll actually give us a meeting right now to talk about a couple of things and present it. It'll actually give us a meeting to vote on it in two weeks, and it'll actually give the Airport Authority two meetings to discuss what they want, so that there's not anything rushed through and if people have questions. There may not be questions that come up right now in the next five minutes.
Well, from a legal standpoint, it needs to be screened and scrutinized, and we may have a discussion, or the Airport Authority may have a discussion, on items that we don't have any control over. So I'd like to see it scrub legally in response here, as we do on most issues of Board of Commissioners, just so that we're having a legitimate discussion. For example, Terry Tibbetts made the comment in one of these meetings as a citizen, that if you, if anything in the proposal that you've made, Commissioner Powell, denies Propeller Airports from being able to proceed forward, and I skimmed over it, some of it does deny them the opportunity to continue to pursue commercial aviation, then we're in default of a contract with Propeller Airports. So that's setting us up for a lawsuit right there, so.
And I understand, try to be careful with what I say. I'm bringing this this morning so that we can bring it here, and it's laid on the table. And if there's citizens that want to get copies of it, the Airport Authority naturally is going to get copies of it. We're going to make sure that they have that, so that we have the next two weeks to do some of that, okay? The only time we can get together, the five of us, is in this meeting, or a call meeting, a meeting that we have let the public know about way in advance, a meeting that we've posted, and everybody has the opportunity to come here, whether they speak or don't speak, that's, doesn't matter. But this is the only place that we have that opportunity to do that, the five of us together. And so, I understand that I got it to you late last night. I'm not going to deny that, but I'm not asking you to vote on anything. What I'm asking you to do is I'm asking you to accept this as, here's a document that I'm bringing, and over the next two weeks, you'll have time to ask Council, discussion. Maybe you and I can have lunch. We can discuss, you know, and then in two weeks from now, the public knows now, that in two weeks from now, that I would like for us to vote on this. And that would give the Airport Authority, tomorrow's meeting, to know about this, and if they want to ask questions over the next two weeks, they'll be able to come and ask questions to us, and then we vote on it. If it passes, it goes on to the Airport Authority, and they'll have another meeting that they can decide to do what they want to do with it at that, at that time.
When the IGA was proposed in September, we did vote, and I voted with you, Commissioner Powell and Commissioner Graham, to table any more discussion of the IGA until we can adjust it better. That's, that's all I'm requesting this morning, is that we're able to adjust your proposal, and before we have a discussion, I'd like to be a little more informed about what you're, what you intend to do, what your ideas are before we talk about it.
I think, if I can tell you, I think your question was whether or not I've analyzed the legally, and the answer to that is no. What I've done is taken what Commissioner Powell has requested and put it into this format for him, so that you can see where the changes are, and that's why it's produced into a redline document. So it shows you what he's asked to have deleted and what he's asked to have inserted, because I thought that was the easiest form in which you all as a group could see it. So I have not done a legal analysis on it.
I'm just asking, is that not important if we're violating a contract that is already in place?
I have to look at that, because the contract that is in place is not between us and Propeller. It's between Propeller and the Airport Authority, so I have to look at that, to be honest with you. So that's, it is a different issue. It's not between Pauling County and Propeller, so that would be a different question.
I respect very much, and I was hoping we could have a little bit of discussion about this, and I'll have a discussion about whether we could have the discussion. However, I very much respect what you're saying, and you did, and I very much thank you for voting to table that at the time, but we were, we were going for a vote on something at that time, and we asked to table it so that we could have more time to look over. So with that said, I looked at what we've done in the past, and I thought, well, even if I don't get it to you early for this meeting, if I can present it, which I have to present it, I want to present it to y'all, all, and if I can present it in a meeting, which this is the only meeting that I'm allowed to present it to all of y'all, then now it's here, the public can get it, the Airport Authority, we can send it to them. They have two meetings. We'll have a meeting in two weeks that we can vote on it if we decide that that's what we're going to do. If it passes, it may not pass, if it passes, it would go on to the Airport Authority for their second meeting that they could look at it, and they can vote gay or nay, and then I have asked at the end of this for them to respond to us by May 21st, by P.M. As far as anything legal, this intergovernmental agreement has already been amended once, so this would be the Second Amendment, and this is an amendment that I put it in writing, that I would like us to look at, and then I would like for us to have discussion amongst us, or one-on-one for lunch, or whatever we need to do over the next few weeks. As far as anything with Propeller, that's up to the Airport Authority, because this board has no, we have not signed anything with Propeller, this board. So that'll be up to the Airport Authority, so when they see this, it'll be up to them. We very well, we could pass this in two weeks if the Board of Commissioners, and they get it, and they say, well, you know, we're not going, we're not going to accept this, we're not going to pass it. That's up to them, the ball being there for it then. So, on bigger, bigger issues like this, I thought, well, let's go ahead and bring it and talk about it, and then we'll have two weeks to do that and get some more answers, and then we can vote on it then. So, I had taken things to Lonnie, and what I asked her to do was to fix a few of my mistakes or doctor up with some of my mistakes that weren't quite as clear, and then she said, why don't I redline it and have the whole intergovernmental agreement in there and redline through what we're not, what we're going to take out, and then put in what we're going to put in. That way it was easy for us to go through and look at.
Just for clarification, the First Amendment was a requirement by the FAA to change some wording.
Yeah, I actually have that in here, as, just did not have it shown in there as number seven, and there's a comment that said added to reflect the number one. I put it in there just so that it wasn't confusing.
I read your notes that Mr. Powell gave, and I read your redline copy. It was done by a highly sophisticated attorney, not one that we employ, but there's one that's always in our presence, Ms. Kate Ock, who's here with Tripple Sanders. Jenna is the other attorney that's here with Tripple Sanders. So somebody who has some kind of connection with Delta has had something to do with this intergovernmental agreement. It, Mr. Powell, it didn't come from your handwriting, it came from somebody who has a very deep understanding of the law. So, I don't know who you employ to write that for you, but, you know, I work for the citizens of Pauling County, I don't work for the city of Atlanta or Delta areas. I'm going to pause for a minute. If anybody else has anything to say, just go ahead. Other than bringing something to you in a meeting for us to look at, and us to be able to talk about, and we don't have to talk about it today, and getting it out to the public so that we can hear from the public, good, bad, or indifferent, getting out to the Airport Authority, it's, it's nothing different than the Last Amendment. It doesn't matter who the FAA asks us to do it. They ask us to do it because things weren't done in it correctly in their opinion, and so we did that. The board last year did that. I thought that was the process that we go through, that if we see that we would like to change things, make things different, this is, this is where it's done. So... to talk about, and we don't have to talk about it today, and getting it out to the public so that we can hear from the public, good, bad, or indifferent, getting out to the Airport Authority. It's nothing different than the Last Amendment, it doesn't matter who the FAA asks us to do it. They ask us to do it because things weren't done in it correctly in their opinion. And so, we, we did that. Board last year did that. I thought that was the process that we go through, that if we see that we would like to change things, make things different, this is, this is where it's done. I, I want to focus on just this, but the bottom line is, there were things in the past that got to this that weren't done here. So I'm trying to make sure that we do things here where we're supposed to do things. And so, it, it's here. My intention is, if you guys have it, if anybody in the public wants to know what it is after the meeting, there's some extra copies and we'll be able to email it to you. And then I'd like to hear from you guys. And then I'd like to bring it back in a couple of weeks in order for us to put it on the agenda, so I'm telling you now, on April 28th, and us to vote on it at that time.
So you're saying this wouldn't be the only discussion, we'd have an opportunity to have more discussion later?
Well, yeah, we can have more discussion at that second meeting in April on the 28th, or we can have, you know, if somebody wants to pick up the phone, or if somebody wants to go out to lunch, two at a time.
And you're also saying you're open to suggestions for changes?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm open for suggestions. You know, we've heard from the public, I've heard from, I've been to all the Airport Authority meetings, I've seen where some issues have come up, you know where I stand on the issues. So I'm bringing this to us. I said I was going to do it three weeks ago, and it's three weeks and here we are. And so my intent is for us to look at it and talk and, and then realize that when this board votes, if it passes, then it would go on to the Airport Authority. They may choose to not even, to all be in their court, then they may choose to do nothing, they may choose to vote on it, they may choose to make some changes and amendments and whatever, and bring something back to us. I mean, this is the process you do. This is the way it works when you do things in a board, in a public setting, in a meeting that you let people know you're doing. This is how it works, so.
Let me say this, I, unlike Dave, I got this last night, having a lot of time to look over it. I understand that this is the process, we have to start somewhere, discuss something. So that's what you're asking for.
That's what, that's all I'm asking for.
That's, that to me is fine. And like they, I'd like to have a read, they've said that with Lonnie and a few other guys, so I think that somewhere along the way, yes, start, start discussing somewhere.
Your thoughts will never get in my head.
Okay, public participation on agenda items, we had no one to sign up for that. Consent agenda, discussed two consent agenda items. Number one is adopt the job classification solid place, recycling manager. And number two, declare attached to this item surplus and approval through the auction or trade is find a comprehensive list. We've all made comment to our lead manager, Tim Ashson, what a great job he's done in we've licensed a lot of these vehicles that were abandoned years ago without great performance. But we'd like to move to either one of these two items for review session. Hearing none, no old business under new business, discuss action to adopt resolution 15, that's what was resolution approved, adoption of the 2015 Holland County Transportation Comprehensive Plan, Scott Green.
I'm going to slide over a little bit and let Assembly here set up while I introduce this item. Sorry for the distraction. As I reported to you all, March 10th, we are winding down the comprehensive transportation plan effort. And over the last few weeks, we've received and incorporated several small changes received from further input and from y'all. Before I introduce our presenter here, I would like to emphasize the purpose of this plan. If you haven't memorized all 250 pages at this point, remember this. The plan is a data-driven and public engagement-driven approach to preparing for the future. This is our tool for selecting projects, soliciting funding from state and federal sources, and deciding the best timeframes to begin construction and engineering of various projects in the plan. Since this plan is such a large task, meaning the Atlanta Regional Commission guidelines that we plan with, we've hired a consultant team. Here today, we have Emily Ritzler, the project manager, and the deputy project manager, Jonathan Webster. They're both with Jacobs, our lead firm, and they're going to provide some overview of the plan. The team also included Arcadis, Atkins, and PEQ. Many of y'all remember Inga Kennedy at some of the public meetings we held. She's out and about the county and doing a good job soliciting input from the public. We appreciate their excellent work, and I also want to thank Erica Parrish, our in-house project manager. She did the launch of the work coordinating the effort, Atlanta Regional Commission, and our consultant team. After the presentation, we'll answer your questions you have. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. We're really happy to be here today to present to you the final recommendation of the common transportation plan. Basically, just an overview of the work that was done. This is a program that is funded by the Atlanta Regional Commission, allowing for counties to develop a local comprehensive transportation plan, making sure that it focuses on local needs and community desires to build up into a regional framework overall. So there, there's a set process within that for each of those, starting with looking at an inventory of existing conditions, assessing what the current future needs from a transportation perspective would be, going through a prioritization process of those projects, and then taking those needs and financially constraining them with available resources in order to come up with recommendations, and also having a robust stakeholder and public participation program within that. So we started with the previous plan that was done, and we looked at the recommendations. This was the first update to the comprehensive transportation plan. We assessed the work that had been done from that, and then moving forward, this is a horizon here going out to the year 2040, to give you a little bit of a framework for it.
Let me interrupt there.
Yes.
We are, we plan with the Atlanta Regional Commission in transportation. We are part of the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission, but as part of transportation, we're in, what, here, 18, 20 county metropolitan Atlanta transportation plan. So some people say, why are you going to a TAQC meeting, or why are you going to an ARC meeting in Atlanta? I, I go to those meetings because they're the future of our transportation, and we're asked to plan with them, and our transportation dollars come through the ARC. And this plan is updated, is it every six years?
Five years.
Every five years. So it's part of logging, biking, and roadway systems. So just a little background, why we're, why we plan with the Atlanta Regional Commission.
Thank you for that there. So just, one of the main focuses of this was to make sure that we had the community input into the overall process. And within that, we conducted a series of stakeholder interviews. Many of you may have been interviewed in this process. We also reached out to the school system, to some of the other transportation providers in the area, to law enforcement, in order to find out some of the areas of the highest need and what would be a sustainable transportation network within the county. We also had a stakeholder committee, which met three times throughout the process, where we brought the needs overall. We also brought the prioritization process to review, and then the recommendations to be vetted through that process as well. And we did that jointly several times with a technical committee as well, that had representatives from the Atlanta Regional Commission, and also from the Georgia Department of Transportation to provide insight into that process. We had two public meetings that were held during the process, one in May of last year and also in August of last year. The combined meetings had over 100 attendees. The first one was more in the 40 range, and then the second one, we wanted to make sure that we increased that involvement in order to get a better input. And mailers were sent out to every resident in order to increase that. And then the next one, we had nearly 90 attendees, so that certainly helped with the public outreach. In addition to the public meetings, we also wanted to make sure that we had opportunities for involvement outside of these broader meetings. We had a project website throughout, it's still active, the recommendations are posted to the project website now. There was a video that was prepared about the process and what the project would be doing. It was also posted on the Local Access Channel. And we conducted web surveys and had kiosks at the public libraries. And we attended several community events to be with people where they are to go ahead and get input into that. Just a few of the statistics on some of that, we had over 120 survey results from the kiosk itself. We had more than 300 responses online to online surveys. In our database for contacts, we had over 800 people beyond what was done with the mailer. And then we also had more than 50 people participate and provide comments through the events that we attended at Wellstar, Chatham, and the Touch and Truck event. So, once we got through some of the initial work of looking at the existing conditions, our task was really to look at what are some of the needs, and we based that not just on travel conditions, but we also based that on the input that we received from the public, identifying those areas of the greatest need. So roadway capacity, really what we're looking at here are opportunities for wide needs for roadways. So what you see in blue on the screen here, I will say this is an unconstrained list of projects. What that means is that we did this without looking at cost to the project. We come back and look at costs later in order to parent down that project list, but we wanted to start with a broad list of overall needs. And you can see some of the highlighted ones there, shouldn't be any surprise to anyone, Dallas Actworth Highway, US 278, SR 61, just to name a few. What you may notice here is that SR 92 is not listed as a need. What we do through this process is we assume existing and committed projects is what we call that. So 92, we are assuming is a given and completed project as we move forward. So with this, it's not that 92 is not a part of the plan, we're assuming that that one's in the work program and going to be completed. We also looked at some opportunities for new, new location roadways, as we would call them, so new roadways that would provide some additional relief and benefit. What we ended up here with was about five new location projects that we considered, a bypass in two segments around the Dallas area, looking at some reliever routes within Hiram, and then also a possibility of a state Route 61 connector more on the north side of Dallas. We spent most of our time in this plan and this update looking at some intersection improvements and some other things that we would call operational improvements. Doing large-scale new location projects is costly, doing roadway widening is costly. So in order to provide some overall benefit and to get some projects implemented quickly, we went back to what are the operational characteristics of these roadways, and what can we do to provide some relief that can be implemented in a much shorter timeframe, and also would be able to be completed by the county if you had the funds to do it yourself, or with the involvement at the state or federal level. So we went back and we looked at many of the major intersections in the area, where some of the bottleneck areas are that are seen. And we assessed each of those individually and created some funding pools specifically to look at intersections, again, so that we could prioritize these upfront and also provide something as a short-term solution, and to focus on operations, knowing that sometimes in the financial constraints that we have facing us today, and some uncertainty in terms of funding from the federal government, that we'd be able to keep moving forward and have progress in the transportation system. So with that, we saw a lot of needs there based on the widening and the new location roadways and also intersections. I will say that we also did a separate analysis, looking at bicycle and pedestrian facilities, and also we addressed the transit needs based on the on-demand services that you already have, so that's not excluded from this plan. The majority of the bicycle and pedestrian projects are associated with any roadway project. So any roadway project that we assume to widen on, we assume at this point would include facilities to move pedestrians and bicycles as well. And then as this goes through a further plan, there are some offline projects as well. There's a poster, a poster in the back of the bicycle and pedestrian facilities, if you'd like to see that. So our next step in all of that was we have to narrow down this list of projects in order to come up with something that can, can be built and is financially constrained in our year, looking out to the year 2040. The evaluation criteria that we use, we did weigh some of these based on the public input and input from our stakeholders. The top two you see there were the primary areas that we looked at, is whether or not there was congestion and delay within the corridors, and also a heavy focus on safety and making sure that we made some safety improvements within the area. And that's where those operational improvements come in line as well. Many of those were to address safety concerns. We also included what the project would look like moving forward if there are any environmental constraints. One of the reasons for that is when you have state and federal dollars involved, there's a different process for addressing environmental issues. So if there were major environmental issues within a corridor, we want to make sure that was understood so that we could schedule the project appropriately and make sure that we could fit it within the tiers that we were talking about. So now that big part was our revenue forecasting. It all always comes down to how can we fund these projects and what money is available in order to begin construction and build some of these projects. The comprehensive transportation plans are fiscally constrained, they are financially constrained. And what we did is we took a step back and we looked at what are the trends for funding right now. We feel that the approach that we use for this process overall is a conservative approach because the funding conditions are variable at the moment. We are waiting for Congress on a transportation bill and whether or not we will have adequate funding at the federal level. We did recently have a change at the state level for transportation funding, which is good news for plans like this in order to get projects moving. But we, we focused on sort of where we are and what we know about the past and use that to build forward. So we assumed that there was a continuation of the SLOST here to support transportation funding. The LMEC funding you see there, that's the Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, that is a funding program that comes out of the Georgia Department of Transportation. The majority of that funding is used for maintenance, repaving roadways, that sort of thing. Because SR 92 is such a large project within this area, we know that that's taken up a lot of the funding for many years. So we pulled back a little bit on the funding levels from State Route 92 to project forward. We did not assume we'd have a full amount of State Route 92 moving forward because it is such a large multi-county project. So we scaled that back a little bit in terms of looking forward and projecting what we would be getting in terms of federal dollars moving forward. And then we applied growth rates that are standard growth rates that are used by the Atlanta Regional Commission and the state when they do transportation planning and So just to give an idea of what that funding was like, we have three phases of project recommendations, starting with Phase One. This is a requirement of the Atlanta Regional Commission for this process. It's a five-year short-term action plan. So that runs from now, 2015, until 2019. The current SLOST will be completed in 2017. So the two phases that you'll see there is that we assumed a SLOST moving forward and that we would have some funding coming in through the last few years of that. So you're looking at Phase One, about $2 million, much of what's coming at the federal and state level, and why you don't see federal and state dollars listed there, is that's already been committed through that time window. So this is additional funding beyond that. And then we also have Phase Two and Phase Three, you're looking at about $350 million, and then about $400 in the long range moving forward, and most of that comes out of escalation. So that's actually a nice conservative approach to it, looking forward at what we can do. And then the real challenge was doing cost estimates on all these different recommendations. We did look at every single one of the needs that was listed. We prepared cost estimates on those projects. We, the Atlanta Regional Commission does have a cost estimating tool that we use for these projects, and really that process gives us a quarter of magnitude between the projects and what we can expect. When you look out and do long-term planning estimates, you have larger contingencies built in, but it gave us a comparison method for the projects. So to get into what the overall recommendations are, Phase One, as you'll see, what we talked about, are written about, are really focusing on those priority intersections, and what could we do to provide some operational improvements in the short term? And then looking at the roadway widening that are already programmed, so State Route 92 and State Route 360, Matlin Road, and the projects that are already committed through your SPOs program. We also have some funding identified for some sidewalk improvements within that, and also to move forward with some of the recommendations that are in the plan, to begin looking at the feasibility studies for some of those new location roadways, or also look at what they would call scoping-type projects for some of the widening projects. So to begin some of that early engineering and early planning on those projects, to get a little bit more information, and also begin to feed those into the regional and state process. Phase 2, again, you're looking at quite a few intersection improvements. I will say that between these phases, what we wanted to make sure we could do is provide a lot of flexibility in here. So the prioritization is available as part of the plan, and as funding needs change, or as information changes, then there's some ability to shift some of these projects. Or if a roadway widening project, for example, were to come about earlier than expected, then maybe that would remove some funding from intersection improvements, and you can apply them to some different intersections instead. So we wanted to look at how you could base them in. So some of these corridors would have intersection improvements come in first, and they're meant to last about 10 years, and then you would bring in the widening after the back. So that's sort of the thought process behind how that works. But you will see on some of these, the intersection improvements are slated along with the widening themselves, just because of the timing of when we think that they would be able to come in. And then again, Phase 3, this is our long-term view, looking out to 2040. We, in all of these, in the last two phases, we created funding buckets, as we were calling them ourselves, is to, again, provide that flexibility, so that you would have an assigned amount that could be used at your discretion to look at the intersection improvements, to look at pedestrian facilities, knowing what the priorities are within the plan. But again, to have the decision come down at the local level and be able to decide what's appropriate, and if needs change, which they do over the course of time, that you have the flexibility to make those adjustments within this plan. So with that, we're very happy to take any questions you have, and appreciate your time today.
It's a great plan, you know, put a lot of work in, and it's pretty amazing. Now, before you have to plan out, our SPOs will end in 2017, which means we'll be getting a lot of ideas together for the SPOs of 2016, which will probably be on the primary timeframe. So, we'll pre you guys for ideas, for the next SPOs that need to come out, and we'll see what the, Scott, you got pretty excited about what the state did with the transportation plan, and that opened up a little opportunity here for us in the county for additional road projects, so any comment on that?
The legislature did pass, and I guess we're waiting up next for the governor to sign the transportation bill. It seemed to be a very smart compromise between the House and Senate versions. I was pretty impressed with the detail that they put into that. They ended up with a excise tax of 26 cents, if you haven't read about it, that will bring in, I guess nearly a billion dollars per year to add to the state effort for transportation. That bodes well for just things like keeping Highway 92 on track. What has happened is, as environmental issues come up and delays happen in projects, the state diverts the funding that is in capacity projects over to maintenance, which is always a need. And by having a dedicated source for maintenance projects, or a better source of funding for maintenance projects, I think there'll be more effort to keep the bigger projects on track. I think that'll help. There'll be much less of a tug-of-war going forward. The needs are still much greater when you look at what it really would have led to see. They settled on something that helps us maintain, and it does help, I think, as far as 92 staying on schedule. This plan, you know, does outline funding that we anticipate could be allocated to Paulding County. We still have to be very vigilant, working with A R C, and make our case. As new waves of years of funding come available, we have to solicit a lot of these projects and go through a process where it's vetted, and we argue the benefit-cost ratio and things like that on these projects. So we will still have to go after these projects to get them. It's not just going to be money flowing our direction. That's a continual thing that we will do. You know, Highway 92, of course, has been the highest on our list, and it, when we say it's committed, it's well underway behind the scenes, and we'll see groundbreaking in the next couple of years. And much of that corridor will be constructed in the next 10 years. I'm much more confident than I've ever been saying that. Given the direction we're in now, I feel good. But, you know, there's a lot, a lot of things that have to be completed before we can actually see dirt coming. Were there any questions specific to the plan, or about any projects?
Great conversation.
Just like to add that City of Dallas did approve the plan two weeks ago. Hiram approved it last week, and City of Braswell is considering it at their next meeting. So we're looking for all municipalities to adopt the plan as well, so we'll all add a piece in this plan going forward. And we are requesting today you approve this understanding. It is a tool, it is a guide. You're not approving a specific project today. That's, that's, that's what you're voting on, this is a plan to go forward with. Something that we want to be more of a, serve as a living document, we can use to pull projects out of, to help develop our next SPOs program, help develop our requests. We go to A R C, we've already vetted it through their quality model, we've already done traffic modeling, we've shown the need. So a lot of the legwork has been done to justify these projects going forward, and we can pull them, pull them out of the plan and then go after them. That's when the real work begins, going forward, when we actually see funding commitments from the Atlanta Regional Commission. There will be, I anticipated a couple of editorial changes. If you'll give us the latitude to just get those to you this month, and we'll send you a final copy of the document. If you do have any last-minute changes, just send them to us. And then, my understanding, the Atlanta Regional Commission asked us to add an executive summary at the very front. So I will, once that's ready, we will send that to you by email, let you look it over, see if anything jumps out, that raises any concern, but it should just be a good overview of the whole document, just to help digest it a little bit, before you dive into all that good reading. All right?
The lady's name, I don't know.
I'm sorry, Emily Ritzler, with Jacobs.
Thanks.
All right, E Z L E R.
That's what I hear.
And Jonathan's her deputy here, and through us, Ben Witten, for the whole, that part of two years now, of course, on this plan.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. That's the conclusion of regular business, and going to the next session. Before we get into system wishing to speak, I'd like to take a comment and break, and come back in with a few other lines. So we'll just pass. We'll call the meeting back in order, and we have now our folks participating on agenda items, Chris Byer, Black Republican.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, former county manager Mike Jones conducted taxpayer-funded background checks in late 2013 and early 2014. You've said publicly that you don't know who he did background checks on, but if you did know, you would not tell the people of Paulding County because it's part of a criminal investigation. Mr. Chairman, respectfully, if you don't know who he did background checks on, then how can you say that it is part of an extortion scheme against Jones? Wouldn't you have to know whom the background checks were on in order to know why Jones put them on his county credit card? I strongly urge you and the fellow commissioners to do everything in your power to obtain those names Paulding County taxpayers deserve to know.
Thank you.
Kirsten Liberty.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, you said at the last meeting that you have the backs of the 700 people that work for Paulding County Government. I agree with you that Paulding County has some of the best people in the state working hard every day to make this county a better place to live. But the situation with Mike Jones has nothing to do with 700 hard-working men and women of county government. Your comments at the conclusion of the last meeting seem to indicate that the DA Dick Donovan asked Mr. Jones to conduct background checks on the county dime. Given the fact that the district attorney's office has criminal investigative authority, why in the world would the district attorney ask the county manager to execute background checks to help in a criminal investigation?
No ma'am, I did not say that. I did not say that.
Okay, it makes no sense and doesn't pass the smell test. And if you say that Mr. Donovan told Mr. Jones to do the checks...
No ma'am, I did not say that.
That is not accurate. And I'm sorry, I got that information off the video, and I was at the meeting. As chairman of this county commission, these background checks happened on your watch. You have a responsibility to make sure it never happens again. Please do everything in your power to ensure that in the future, only the sheriff or the district attorney conducts such investigative activities with our tax dollars. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, at the last commission meeting, you made it clear that you were okay with Mike Jones conducting background checks on Paulding County citizens with taxpayer money. In the future, if another county employee were to find herself or herself in the unfortunate position that Mr. Jones himself found himself in with respect to the alleged extortion, would you recommend that the employee use their county-issued credit card to pay MAGA V I? Or would you advise them to let the DA or sheriff handle such investigative activity?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little late on this, but I think I'm almost caught up. I just wanted to give you the opportunity to clarify some of the comments that you did make on the last commission meeting. Did I understand correctly that you are okay with county employees spending county funds for the purpose of helping in a criminal investigation that was launched by the district attorney? If so, why? If the DA conducted that as part of his investigative authority, would it not be available in an open records request? Furthermore, you said last meeting that you had no idea who Mike Jones conducted background checks on, yet you seemed so sure of the purpose for those checks. Were you aware of when he was conducting them? And just out of curiosity, can you tell me who approves his county-paid credit card expenses? As a concerned citizen, at this point, what I'm really wondering is, can you tell me what policies and procedures are in place today that will ensure this kind of thing never happens again? You also said at the last meeting specifically to the people who you worked with you and for you, that you have their backs. I just want to be sure you also have the backs of Paulding County citizens in mind as well. Thank you.
Your governmental agreement is there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Last week, when I emailed and asked you about the agenda, I wasn't aware that Mr. Pownell was going to have something prepared today. So when I saw the agenda last week, when it was published, I was, I was excited for that. I'm a little bit disappointed this morning that we, that we put off that discussion. I would like to hear what he has to say on the issue. I want to be clear that I oppose this intergovernmental agreement. I opposed it when it was proposed, when it was voted on, I opposed it today, and if it stands, I will continue opposing it. But I want to be clear that my opposition to that agreement doesn't have anything to do with commercial traffic at the airport, or even the airport at all. What that agreement does is it puts off the responsibility and accountability for a county asset, and it takes that responsibility and accountability out of your hands, out of the hands of this board, and puts it into the hands of people who have been pointed to where they are. It's not the way we should do business, is it, Jonathan? When we see this, this type of maneuver, we see it, we see it at the state level, we see it at the federal level as well. It's an inappropriate way to conduct business. And, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you work with Mr. Pownell, and he'll take the lead in working to bring forward and at least discuss and talk about what he or any other commissioners would have proposed, that how they maybe want to see that agreement changed, and I would support amendments that would remove, would take back the accountability and the responsibility, put it back in the hands of the general business board. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, other commissioners, I also oppose the I G A, and believe that it should be rescinded. Commissioner Pownell voted against it back in September, when you and Commissioner Carmichael voted for. Commissioner Collette, Commissioner Crowe, Commissioner Pownell, all ran in the election last year with a major platform of no airport. They won. So, with that being said, I recommend that we do away with the, with the intergovernmental agreement, that you have tied us as taxpayers over the next 10 years over the control of one of the biggest assets of this county. We no longer have the ability to vote in new commissioners and other items to go along with it. I urge that the airport authority, that you urge and go along with the airport authority to open a dialogue to improve it and make it more friendly for us, the taxpayers. Thank you.
Good morning. I too was excited to see the intergovernmental agreement on the agenda this morning, and was hoping there would be some discussion. I'm saddened that there's not. Last year, this commission took away the ability to govern the aspects of Paulding Northwest Atlanta Airport, even though it kept in place its responsibility to fund the airport on an annual basis. The Paulding County Board of Commissioners, who are all of you here, are elected by the people of Paulding County. You are accountable to the people of Paulding County, the members of the airport authority, while good people, most of them are appointed and not elected. While I think the I G A should be rescinded, short of that action, I support amendments to the I G A to give you, the Paulding County Board of Commissioners, a greater say over the activities at Paulding Northwest Atlanta Airport. I hope that this is what Commissioner Pownell wants to discuss, and would encourage those discussions to begin as soon as possible. Thank you.
Your motion to adjourn. Say it. All in favor, say aye.